You did send us a proposal, so just have a little brief synopsis about kind of what you'll do for us.
Sure. So, thank you for having me here today, Brett Norel. I'm a current resident, actually, here in the city of Madison, Illinois, in the Silver Ridge subdivision. I've been in healthcare leadership my entire career. I started at Children's in Milwaukee in 2001, was there about thirteen years or so, and I moved up here to Madison, Illinois, as the chief financial officer at Holy Family. I then became chief financial officer of the Prentiss and Sisters, their main, responsible ministry for their healthcare, and then the CEO of Holy Family. And since part of Holy Family, I have been in the consulting space of executive coaching, strategic planning, operational improvement initiatives, primarily in healthcare, but I've also done a little work here in Madison with some different organizations where I helped write strategic planning. I know it's probably one of the questions, why a healthcare person? I would say strategic planning is a process. It's not necessarily something that's just healthcare. It's not something that's just education. A facilitator is going to listen to you as the board, listen to your constituents, listen to the teams of individuals you'd like to have as part of the process and to bring all those thoughts under a strategic plan, right? Whether you're educated in healthcare, I've done a lot of strategic planning throughout my career in healthcare, and it doesn't mean I know everything about healthcare or even what I was strategic planning for. The fact is, is that if somebody who can facilitate that discussion and bring all those thoughts together and put it into a document that's easily followed into the draft and it captures the thoughts of the individuals in the room. So when I had talked with Stacy and I put my proposal together, how I like to do strategic planning is like this. I like face-to-face conversations. I like to do interviews. I like to get your thoughts about the direction, in this case, of the school district, where you'd like to see that go. And Stacy's experience, since I did it for a local entity here, where I'm not an individual who likes to get, have a retreat for half a day or two days. To me, I think it's more about a face-to-face discussion doing, again, if you're going to have, say, a group of teachers in a forum, get in the room and listen to them and capture their thoughts. Use some surveys, whether it's a Survey Monkey or some sort of electronic. Because some people don't like to speak up in a group, right? They'd rather express their thoughts electronically. And they get anonymous to you, but open to me is like to follow up and have, hey, I need to understand what you mean by this comment. Help me follow what you're thinking. And it's really driven by you as the school board. My proposal is one where I say, I'd like to do forums. I'd like to do interviews with school board members. I'd like to talk to individuals you feel have input into that strategic plan. My job is to then synthesize that into digestible goals and steps to achieve. I like to run it as three years. I think five gets a little too long. Three is one, I think, that's manageable. Then the delivery of the product that I bring is, I look at the building blocks of each goal. So you may come out and say, these are the goals we'd like to establish, as I kind of take all that information in. And I may tell you that goal is best in year three because accomplish goal one first, and then maybe goal five will be in that second year, and then it builds you up to, right? And so I try to build those pillars of what you want and want to have achieved by you. I also deliver not only a written report, but also deliver a tracking document that can be used by the board at every meeting. And what I leave, I say my recommendation is you have each of these sections, you cover two or three of those tools at every meeting, so they stay in front of you the whole time. And then you do each section, so you rotate sections to them. So I try to make it as easy as possible for anybody to participate in and understand what I'm trying to achieve. Now, again, back to the healthcare piece. When I look at, I actually sometimes feel that if I was asked to purely be in this healthcare space and strategy, I sometimes can have a narrow view. It helps to sometimes bring somebody in outside the field who listens to the experts, because you're the experts, your teachers are the experts. The superintendent or your inner superintendent is the expert in education. You need somebody who can help run all this, not just you. And that's why I've activated to that stage since I wanted to have anybody who would like on the service. I've done this, again, I've been in senior leadership positions. I've been writing strategic plans at healthcare at times for probably fifteen, I might call it. So now I'll answer the question.
How many strategic plans have you put together and implemented?
Well, in my professional career, I've been involved, you know, in healthcare, you're writing every year. You always retrace it every year. So I've been writing on a department level, or the departments I've been part of. My first job in healthcare, I was an administrator fellow. So that's where I cut my deep, even at writing one for Children's Hospital, the entire plan. So I've done it as large as the public entities, and I've done it as small as a department. And everyone has to get implemented, right? Because that's the goals that the board sets. So I would say, you know, at least like one for every year I've been involved.
Yeah, I guess I do. I mean, I've, you know, I've been through self-institutional self-studies and strategic planning and things like that. And usually the people that we work with that are, you know, kind of professional, you know, we have the budget, you know, really do know what kinds of questions to ask, really do need to know what sort of focus is, what guy needs to take, you know, taken in discussion groups, et cetera, et cetera, which seems to imply to me that you have to really, you know, you really have to be professional in the institution and certainly in the profession of the education. So, you know, we're not going to like make up our own, you know, with the coordinator, we're not going to make up our own questionnaire. We're not going to, I mean, we're not qualified to do that, but there are people who do this sort of stuff. So how are you going to, how are you going to, how are you going to fill that?
That's a great question. So first, I would help facilitate the development of those questions. Two, is in the education space, there's clearly a lot of resources. I do my homework, right? There's a lot of public information around how you begin to guide some of these questions. You're right, I'm not an expert in education, but I've got the ability to do research and figure that out. I mean, I have a plan here that I've already started to do a little research. I found a proposal out there on, that's public information, that I can begin to educate myself on what are really solid questions. I would approach the same way, again, when I was in the employment space myself, right? I don't always know what every question is asked, but I do the research and I come up with all these questions. And I did the same thing for the local one that Stacy's familiar with, where I didn't know every question to ask, but I do my homework, do my research.
That actually leads me to a question. It's interesting that you talked about doing your homework. My question was, what kind of homework have you done since you gave us your proposal specifically? Like, have you done any, or what have you done since you submitted that?
Yeah, you know, I, being a resident in this community, it's really easy to keep tabs on what the school district has. So I've gone through the board meeting minutes. I've read the information and noticed to start to educate myself deeper on the school district. You know, being a taxpaying member, I try to keep myself educated on all of the goings on, whether it's in the school district, city government, county government. Because for me, not only living here, but employed here feels important. So it's a lot, I give it usually, I try to get the best sources, right? Right from the, right from the meetings that are posted, right from the minutes, read those. And I did that prior to coming here.
And then also, what do you consider are the challenges of knowing an educational system since you've never been part of one before and working as a teaching planner?
I'm sorry, the first question.
What are the challenges in creating a strategic plan for an educational system never having been part of one before?
Yeah, and I think it goes back to your question. It's really, you know, I've not employed in education, so that clearly is a gap. I also think that it helps me not necessarily be biased by what, I begin that education space. I'm not one to just follow the next trend. I'm going to, again, do my homework on education, on plans, look what others are developing, see what the current trends might be, and allow you as the board to have that open discussion about where you want the school district to go. My job is to help identify how you jump those hurdles to get there.
Oh, what are the challenges?
What are your current challenges?
What are your challenges in having never been part of an educational system and trying to do that?
Right, well, like I said, you know, for me, if I was in the healthcare space, it wouldn't be as hard. It's going to be the time to do that research, really think the, find those, you know, find the education studies, understand kind of where the trends. My wife is a teacher, I have that benefit, I could talk to her about it, but, you know, the elementary side, not on the high school side. But still, that whole idea of just really getting my brain into the education space versus the healthcare, that's probably the challenge I would have. But it's not unique when I get a phone call to ask help on a project. The first step is, alright, let's learn.
So the timeline to produce the strategic plan, you had in your proposal, I believe it was December. I think, am I correct?
Yeah, I would say, you know, four to six months, but that can change based on, you know, how many surveys do you want to do? How many forums do you want to have? How many people do you want to interview? Because it just takes time in between the, writing all together.
So, that being said, do you anticipate it flexing beyond that time? Or, I mean, do you feel that December is a good amount of time, or do you think it would take a little longer? How would you feel, I mean, given the more and more research you've started to do in what it would take to produce?
The first step in this is a scoping discussion with you as the board. That would, that would give a better, you know, lock into the timeline.
Okay.
I think four to six months is certainly doable. It just, again, matters, you know, if the board sits down and says, hey, we want a forum at every one of the schools of every group, do those take time to plan and to have? If you're going to say, we're going to get, you know, three groups, we're going to bring the teachers in, we're going to hold those forums, we're going to do two-hour reviews, but we scoped that out, that makes it a lot easier to say, hey, I could hit four forms. It's going to be access to you as well as the board, because there's going to be those checkpoints in to say, alright, I have my first results of the survey and a forum. I'd like to talk with you as the board about this.
Is that, now, if that were to expand the timeline of expanding, would that expand the cost of the strategic plan?
No, no, no. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for being here, Chris, it means a lot to me. As a taxpayer of this community and living here and working here now, do you think that Madison Public School District needs a plan, a strategic plan? I think everybody needs a strategic plan, right? It's structure, structure and guidance is where you want to go. You know, to expand on that, I would say, strong school districts are critically important for a number of reasons, as you know. One, you're producing a workforce, right? People who are going to leave high school and be here for the population. Or they're going to further their education, right? They're going to go on to that next level and hopefully return here. Third, strong schools attract people to the community. When I, you know, when my job ended at Holy Family, when I began looking, where am I going to go next? For me, it's economy, right? What does it look like, taxes, et cetera? What are the schools? Because schools drive so much in the community, they're critical. So you have, that plan gives you as the board the structure and says, this is where we're going to get from point A to point B, however. So.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the proposal. I really appreciate the, very important, easy to read. My question is, you know, looking at the fee structure, it looks like there's a range provided, and I'm just curious, how does that get determined in community use and insight on that?
Yeah, the main would be, again, that's, I mentioned the scoping discussion at the beginning. You know, it would be, it would really be, you know, how many? Let's use the example, if you wanted to go to every single school, probably every single principal, then have a forum at every single school, right? And if that got to that level of effort, it would go to that higher. I don't see it necessarily going to twenty-five. I had initial conversations. I put a range because it does come to that scope of discussion, but I don't want to exceed that. But if we say, you know, I'll just make it up. If you say to me, we'd like to have three teacher forums, interviews with the board, electronic survey, and now it's kind of a scope of the map collection, five thousand dollars. Who would go about that? It's about time, and, you know, or how long the sessions, do you want to have a full day? I know some proposals will tell you, we're going to give you, you know, the price of this, and then every single day I'm on site, I'm going to charge two thousand dollars. I don't want to do that. I'd rather just negotiate with you, set the prices.
Of course, we get a home town discount.
Of course, you're not paying travel. My travel is driving all the road. I want to charge the house.
So Brett, I'm going to be kind of like the negative villain here right now. So you're in healthcare, have been, and with Holy Family. Holy Family was purchased. So is it due because they were having some financial struggles and thought that it was to their benefit to combine with Brager? And then you're no longer with them, right? So, you know, I'm wondering how this all works out to, why we should hire you for our school business, right? Do you know, can I write any up here?
So I can tell you, yes. I'll give you a little more detail on my industry with Holy Family. I came here in, like I said, in May of 2015, as the chief financial officer. On December 17th, I transitioned to the corporate office when the CEO of the corporate office retired. I was there all of four months when the CEO of Holy Family retired, and I was asked to go back. When I went back, they were projected at that point in time to lose eighteen million dollars. And they did. But I was charged with a number of things, including financial improvement. So in one year, we took it from eighteen million dollars, lost it to four hundred thousand. Through a number of, not only your extension management or revenue growth, but in healthcare, what's unique about healthcare is an entity like Holy Family is, has everything in it. It has HR, finance, it's got their own billing, their own electronic medical records, a fullback office, as well as healthcare availability. That's hard on an entity to stand alone today and not have the scale and the scope of a larger entity. So part of my goal, my challenge, or my charge as well, was to go and find that partner, to ensure Holy Family's statements to me. As part of that transaction, I knew when I took the job that I was likely working myself out of the job. And I left with my head very high, saying, I did what was right to keep that hospital here, which meant selling it. Brager's position is they typically place their home at the organization after its acquisition. Does that help?
It does.
Okay. So, but you asked a why, right? I think, one, it's the community. I have a, I have a passion for smaller communities, like in the healthcare space, having a strong, Holy Family was one of those employers, right? They needed to survive. I commented on, to Matt, Matt, Matthew, whatever, that, that strong schools are also vital. I live here, right? I want this community to be strong, and schools are a part of it. Yes, I'm not education, but I challenge the status quo, I think, in the way of building a plan that's going to allow you to achieve the goals you've set. You want to get from A to B, I'm going to help you build a plan that'll get you to B. Right? If you need research on education, I'll go find experts and I'll call. Right? I have a broad network, my network, just as a healthcare, and reach out to people who are in the education space and interview them and say, how do we get, and what do we do? And it'll all be private, you know, I wouldn't, the school was Madison Public Schools at the time. It's not a business, right? But it's about, you know, I know this community. I know people that go to the school district, I know people that work for the school district. And it's critically important that they just continue, if you guys continue to raise the bar in schools. And that's all I would challenge you about, charging them, building that plan.
Brett, I must confess to being prejudiced myself in that I had some open-heart surgery about, you know, maybe twelve years ago, something like that. And the first question I asked surgeons is, how many of these have you done? And I didn't mean like just sort of being a general doctor, but how many of these have you done?
Right, that particular person.
And, you know, and I'm kind of like, you know, people that do things for professions are best equipped to do those things. So I didn't check with, you know, a general surgeon, or I didn't check with a pediatrician or anything like that. I wanted to know how many, how many that surgeon had done open-heart surgery. Because, you know, I kind of value my health and my life. But, you know, so my question is, is that I consider myself wildly prejudiced about professions, nevertheless fairly open-minded. And I haven't really heard anything really that you've said yet that makes me want to take the gamble on why we should go outside this particular, this particular sort of, sort of professional, professional relationship here and try somebody that has probably never done, never done a strategic, a strategic study, a strategic plan on a public school system. So I want to, I just want to know, you may be like, you know, exceptionally, you know, exceptionally like have some unusual ideas and have some different approaches, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, I don't, I mean, I'm kind of gambling on the hard side.
And that's, that's it.
Can I add something?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, Carrie, you know, in my experience, we use a facilitator for my business for annual planning and quarterly planning and reviews. And that facilitator has no experience in my industry, but the role and the value that they bring, a good facilitator just keeps the process on task and helps consults with all of these stakeholders. So I just, from my vantage point, I just wanted to share that with the board. I don't do that as necessarily, necessarily a bad thing. I think as long as you're able to keep the process on task and use all the stakeholders and the experts, you know, our superintendent, our board, our community.
I'm going to let Matt finish, let Matt finish, but just so you, just so you know, we're going to deliberate this, and that kind of conversation is for deliberation. It's not one to have in front of our inner community unless there's a question that comes from it. So just, I mean, we will debate those things amongst the group, but just want to make sure that we stay on task.
With that being said, Stacy, I'll defer to that number.
Any other questions for Brett? Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate the information.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Hi Patty, how are you doing today?
Doing good.
Good, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I think, is this the camera? Am I looking at you right now?
Yeah.
Straight ahead of the camera. Because you're over here on a screen and you're over here, so. I'm Stacy Selner, I'm the president of this wonderful board here, and just wanted to, thanking for being willing to come talk to us today.
Sure.
If you want to just give kind of a brief bio and just give us a little information about yourself, and then we'll ask you some questions. And I also, you do have a PowerPoint.
I do have a PowerPoint, too, if that's helpful. That kind of goes more depth in the process, but I'm not sure how much time you have.
Sure. We've slated about a half hour.
Okay.
So, do you want to, would that fit in that timeframe, you think?
I can go through it pretty quickly, and then I can send you actually the PowerPoint as a PDF file, and then you've got, you can have it for your board to look at if you would like.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful.
Okay.
Does it allow you to share your screen?
It says present now your entire screen, so let me see what I can do. Wants to share the contents of your screen with your, okay, it's not allowing me to share. I'm wondering if you have to allow me to.
Yeah, we probably do, we're texting our tech person right now.
Okay.
So in the meantime, if you just want to give us a little just information about yourself and your background in strategic planning, that would be fabulous.
Okay, yes. Well, I've been in education for over forty-five years. Grew up in Door County, and then traveled and was in several different states, in Ohio and Kentucky, and then returned back to Wisconsin. So I've had a variety of roles. Taught elementary school, was an elementary school principal for many years in Oshkosh, was a reading coordinator, supervised principals, twenty-four principals in Oshkosh, and was the HR director during the time that Act Ten happened. And so really, expected to finish out my career in Oshkosh. I've taught in both small and large school districts, in public and parochial. And then an opportunity came for me to return back home to Door County and to serve as superintendent of the district that I graduated from. So I spent the last nine and a half years as a superintendent in Oshkosh. I had more of a deputy superintendent role. So I've done a lot in various settings, especially as a principal and as a central office person with strategic planning of all kinds. And the model that WASB bases theirs on is based on the Baldridge model, which I was very familiar with because we were at one point as a school looking at the Baldridge process for excellence. So that's a little bit about myself. I've been doing this consulting for a year now and am pretty busy as I love working with schools and I love education. And so this is a wonderful way for me to still be a servant leader in education through this consultancy role.
Excellent. Any questions about for Patty? Okay, you want to try again your PowerPoint, Patty?
Okay, it says the entire screen, but when I go to share, it doesn't, it doesn't have anything. It just says Chrome wants to share the contents of your screen, and it says share, so it might be on my end. Stacy, how hard would it be? Let me see here, I'm trying to look if there's other.
Yeah, if you want to email that to me, I can email out to the whole board.
Yeah, and then I can just walk you through it very quickly. So I will go ahead and do that right now. And I'll actually, do you want me to do a PDF file or the actual PowerPoint?
I think either PDF would probably be easiest to open up.
Okay, then I will quick go in and save it as a PDF file. Well, this doesn't, okay, I got to get myself back out of here. Okay, it's coming now. I'll just attach it to, I'll, actually, I'll just put PPT in the subject so you can differentiate it from the other ones that we were going back and forth with today.
Okay, great.
Says it's still loading.
If Patty, while it's loading, can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
I'd like to ask you, what is it about WASP that's different from other strategic plan companies? Like, why should we choose WASP?
Oh, that's my last slide. Okay. Quickly go to that. First of all, just the integrity of the process. It's, uh, you know, as a school board, you can decide, you know, how involved you want to be as a school board. So it's very customizable, uh, to you as a board. We've worked with some boards where they will decide to have a couple of school board members attend. We've also recently worked with one this fall that, um, decided that they would not have any school board members actually participating in, in the steering committee. But there was like, uh, two board members that came and kind of sat and observed the process. So they, but they didn't participate a lot. Depends on your role as school board members. Because as you can imagine, if you are bringing in a stakeholder process, which is what this is, you want to have business people there, you want to have staff people there, you want to have community members, you want to have parents. And so the process is really driven from gathering data of what you believe about your district and then what are some facts that you know about your district? And then looking at the challenges that you're going to have in the next three to five years. And of course, you'll be having a new superintendent, so that will be, you know, a challenge with new leadership. But it's also provides you with an opportunity to really get a good perspective from the community. So it's really community based. I've worked with other strategic planning models that are typically done by staff. And I think this one is unique because it does bring in a lot of different facets from the community. Like, one of the things that we will do is we will do a community survey. And that survey will ask them all kinds of questions and it will also ask them for feedback about what they think are important things. Like, what are the skills that students, they feel students should have when they're going to graduate? What do they feel in the community is important? Because you really want to get that human element from your community because you want your strategic plan to really represent what your community's values are and those kinds of things. And, you know, people come to the table with different perspectives. And it ends up being a really good learning experience because staff members learn from community, community learns from staff members, and there seems to be a greater buy-in. So when we get to that last session, when we finally have a final draft, because ultimately you as the board will approve the strategic plan. So the steering committee will come to you as a board and will present their strategic plan to you. You, of course, can make modifications. You can ask questions at that point. We do find it's pretty comprehensive and it's rare that, that a board might, you know, take all the work that's done and completely change it because it usually does represent a lot of different perspectives. And so when we celebrate at that last meeting, we really have, um, it's neat to see the collaboration that has occurred and the understanding that's occurred between community members. And in the last one that I did, I even had some community members step forward to take charge of one of the action steps because it was really related to the community's partnership and the school couldn't do it by itself. And so there was actually a couple of business people from the community who said, we'll step forward and we'll actually work on this, you know, action step with you. So I think it helps you as a board really listen to your community and your staff members. Helps you kind of focus on some significant changes you might need. But it also celebrates the things you're doing right. Because one of the things that we do is, um, for some of you that are in business or in school settings, you probably have heard of a SWOT analysis. Well, we do a SOAR analysis. So we look at strengths, we look at opportunities, we look at aspirations, and then we look at, at relationships. So we do a little more positive spin on that. It is, um, we will come up with measurable goals. So the goals have to be specific, they have to be timely, they have to be relevant, and they have to be doable, achievable. You know, we call them SMART goals. So, um, you want to be able to have that. And then, of course, one of the things that the community group, the steering committee has to do is if they're going to put in something, it's going to be up to you as a board then to decide, do we have the resources to implement this right away? Is it going to take some additional work and maybe in year two we'll have the resources? That we typically see if somebody wants a certain curriculum looked at, that maybe the first year they'll actually do the analysis for the curriculum and then the, the second year of the plan will be that a presentation will get made to the board about maybe a change in resources so that the board has time to plan and the budget and things like that. But sometimes a lot of things can be done without there being a lot of resource cost.
Everyone does have a PowerPoint now. Are there any other questions, Matthew?
Aside from your experience in education, how many strategic plans have you written?
Have I written?
Yeah. And if you can tell us, could you tell us through the report?
Okay, I'm just going to put you up so I can see you all because that'd be easier than me looking at the, just a minute here. Okay, where did you go? Here we go. Okay, I feel better having to face to face. I was an elementary principal for 17 years. So I probably have been doing strategic planning as an elementary principal for 17 years. When I became, um, at the district office, similar to a deputy superintendent overseeing, um, the other schools, I was responsible for working with them on their strategic plans for their schools. So typically what happens is you might have a strategic plan as a district with some core things you're working on, but you really want that to then come down to the school level and you want the schools and their building teams to be doing and working on something that's going to support your strategic plan. And I think a lot of times we have schools kind of going off on their own and doing their own school goal and it doesn't necessarily follow in with the plan. And then it can even go further. When I was working with HR, of course, we did a lot with teacher effectiveness. And one of the things there is then how do you take that strategic plan that's at the district level? It became a school building plan to maybe work on some aspect of that strategic plan. And then what does a teacher do in the classroom as far as their teacher effectiveness and their professional growth? So once you have those three things all aligned with each other, you really start to see a lot of progress taking place. And you also then hear from staff members that, you know, often we hear from them, oh, it's initiative fatigue. Here's another new thing that we're doing. Really, everything should fall into your strategic plan. And if it's not part of your strategic plan, maybe it's something that doesn't get done, you know? Because I think as educators, sometimes we hop on the bandwagons that come along and we kind of spread ourselves too thin. And I think it's really important to pick a few things and really do them well and have them be. And that's what the WASB process does. You really can customize it to your district.
I'd like to kind of go back to my question. Because I mean, we have principals and superintendents and they all have their and things like that. But specifically being a strategic planner from your education, that's kind of what I was wondering about as far as how many strategic plans have you written? And then kind of like a follow-up, is this like a template? Because I've kind of seen that this is like more of like a template through ASB and the, um, every school district is going to be different. So I guess more or less, I know that you have experience in education, working as a principal and superintendent and things like that, but I'd love to know where your experience lies with strategic plans.
Well, I, maybe I didn't explain myself clear enough. The things that I did with the district, especially in Oshkosh and in Southern Door, were strategic planning. The WASP process is very close to what the process was that I was using because I worked with Baldridge. I looked at, uh, getting community involvement. I looked at all aspects of the organization. So I've written those plans. Now, if you wanted to say, Patty, have you, tell me a district that you wrote the plan for? I don't write your plan. I facilitate the process. It is your steering committee and your administrators who actually write the plan because I'm not going to be there to implement it. And we all can cite examples of where we have plans and we put them on a bookshelf and that's where they stay and people forget all about it. So a very important part of the process is once we've defined with the steering committee those areas, then it is members of the steering committee and they facilitate that process that actually sit down and say, what's doable this first year, what's doable the second year, what's doable the third year? And actually, your strategic plan shouldn't just be, well, let's put something in place for three years and then it's done. It should be, you put in a plan in place for like three years. When the first year is done, you look at what you've accomplished. If something has been accomplished, it can be institutionalized and put into place. Maybe something had to improve to the second year and you just keep refreshing and keep working on that. Does, I don't know, does that help?
No.
Okay.
We have another question here from Tony.
Sure.
Hey Patty, thank you for, uh, joining us tonight to put this together. I was curious, are there any examples that we could see from other, uh, school districts that you've worked with? I don't exactly know, actually write the plans, but I'd be curious to know if they make those plans public or if there's any example of a fish deliverable that we can see or follow.
Yeah, sure. I can, I can certainly reach out to WASB and I can, um, you know, see if we can get some of the plans that were done. It usually ends up being a pretty extensive report that gets presented to the board. And we try to get members of the steering committee to actually do the presentation again because they're going to be the ones living it. Um, and so there, the report that you would get delivered as a board would have the process that took place and what were some of the things that were identified. And then it would have a copy of the strategic plan, but I can certainly get that for you.
Thank you. And another question I get, just looking at the fee structure, could you help me understand that a little bit? I see the, the not to exceed amount of 10-8, but then I see the hourly rates above that. So I, I didn't know if, how I'm interpreting that is. So it's going to be 10-8, up to 10-8 plus the hourly rates. Is that right?
Um, typically, we don't go above the 10-8. The related other expenses would be if all of a sudden you, like, the steering committee for some reason couldn't get their work done in the six meetings and they decided they wanted to have an extra meeting. Or let's say your administrative team, when they're gathering some of the data together to share with the steering committee, would like me to do a, um, another meeting with them so that they could better understand their task or something. That's what the related would be, but usually it doesn't exceed that 10,800. In fact, in many times, because, uh, WASB, this would be a member service that we provide, typically what happens is we do some gratis work if there's things that come in above that. So the 10,800 was based on, you know, having six meetings, having some planning meetings with you as a board. I'm not charging you for tonight, uh, you know, or anything like that. But just some of the meetings that would happen. And then, of course, um, the travel and time and some of the prep work that would go into preparing for those meetings.
Right. So I guess, you know, I'm just trying to give a picture of what the total cost would be if we went forward with this proposal. I don't know if there's any way for you to ballpark that, you know, with those.
Well, I would say, based on the proposal that we put through, it'd be between 10,300 and 10,800. I pretty much had to, when I was putting this proposal, had to go ahead and determine how many meetings we would have, what my prep time would be based on other districts that I've worked in, um, that sort of thing. The office time, the office coordinator time is like the person who actually administers the survey, you know, and sends the survey out and things like that. So we have to, we have to pretty much look at that pretty closely when we put our proposals together.
Thank you. Uh, one final question, uh, looking at the steering committee, it sounds like that ends up driving a lot of the process as far as putting everything together. I understand that there's a pretty diverse mix of stakeholders between board members, community members, and teachers, administrators, and everything. How many board members are typically involved in that process, your experience, where you typically see that?
Well, like I said, uh, the one district we worked with last fall, the board members chose not to be part of it, but they did have two people that came and just observed the process. Typically, it's two or three board members. You don't want to get, I don't know how large your board is.
Seven, Patty.
Yeah, so you don't want to have a quorum because then you have to publicize that as a meeting. And then that really curtails people. We do a lot of activities where we ask people to get in groups and have conversations. And I think the more honest the conversations can be and the more open that people can be and, and feel like they can really express their concerns or their dreams or whatever, the better the process will be.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Pips?
Hi Patty, my name is Matthew Pips. Uh, we actually spoke on the phone a few weeks ago and I wanted, I wanted to relay that, uh, I really enjoyed our conversation and it was very productive. And I did explain that to the board and we were citing some other things in the past, but
Okay.
very nice to see you, uh, on the screen as well tonight. So, thank you.
I'm not sure which one you are. I think you're on the side for me.
Um, but my question is, Lori, though, but thank you for the time that I had with you.
Okay.
It's pretty nice that I randomly called you and you answered your phone and I spoke to you for about 30 minutes on the phone. So thank you is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
My question though, uh, how can you facilitate action, actual action with the strategic plan in your role as a consultant?
Well, one of the things that we are going to be asking the steering committee to put in their action plan is that there is a regular follow-up with you as the board on how things are going. Now, most boards don't choose to do that on a monthly basis because there are just some things that take a while to get going. But we have seen boards do that on a quarterly basis or on a semester basis. And definitely the minimal would be a yearly basis. So that would be a way that you are able to monitor what is happening with the strategic plan. And there may be some things that are outside of your control that might happen in Manitowoc that like something may have a target date of being done by January, but something happens and there has to be an adjustment made. And so that's your opportunity for administration to be able to say to you that you are doing, you're going to monitor, you're going to, it really should be a living document, I guess. So it should be something that's flexible and something that's going to be able to change. But ultimately, you as the board are, are, you know, have the accountability. Accountability that the plan gets put in place, accountability. Now, it was interesting because I know you'll be interviewing for a superintendent. In one of the districts we did this past year, um, the superintendent had not announced their retirement and until after the plan was done and then decided to retire. But that plan then was in place and that kind of became a roadmap for the new superintendent coming in.
Thank you very much, Patty.
Okay.
Next, Colin?
Hi, thank you, Patty. The question that I have is basically, how much research have you done into our community, into our, our district? Et cetera. I mean, obviously some planning goes into the, uh, to these proposals. What have you done on the way of, uh, research thus far?
Well, I'm there to facilitate the process. I'm not there to provide the answers and I'm not there to, um, you know, the empowerment comes from you as the board, from your administrative and your other staff and from your community. So it's often better for us not to have, you know, found out a whole bunch of things other than the fact that I know you have an interim superintendent and you will be looking for a superintendent next year. for a superintendent next year. I happen to have been in a class with your previous superintendent, you know, when we were doing superintendent classes, but, but that's about it. So we typically, you know, it doesn't matter if the school district is a small rural district or a really large district, this process works with either, either type of environment and either type of demographic. And we really want there to not be any preconceived notions about what your plan is gonna be because your plan has to be generated from the grassroots.
Okay, well Patty, no other questions here.
Okay.
We do have the PowerPoint. Is there anything else? We got maybe about six minutes. Anything else that you want to highlight on here or should we just have follow-up questions?
Yeah, I guess if you have follow-up questions, you know, there's basically two parts to the process. It's the things that you believe about your district and the things that you know about your district and then what is the master plan going forward? And there is that large green diagram that really kind of spells out the entire process about, you know, what is the role of the steering committee? The Plan Do, Study Act? What is the role of the steering committee? What is the role of the board in monitoring that the plan is being implemented? And again, how do you keep that cycle going? So that's, you know, really important. And I think like, like I said earlier, this is a service we provide through WASB to our members and we really want it to be customizable to what you need.
Patty, I do have a question that I thought of as we were talking. I'm just wondering, what kind of support does WASB offer with the strategic plan after it's formed?
Well, I think a lot of it depends on what your needs are. Right now, as a consultant for WASB, I may be, you know, assigned a community or a district that's in northeast Wisconsin. That typically tends to be my service area, although I have been out on the west side of the state near La Crosse and Eau Claire and, and, you know, down as far as Milwaukee. So we sometimes will work with a school district and do like a strategic plan or something and then they'll say, we need you to come back and do more on data because our administrative team or we need a little more help with understanding data points and what is data. Sometimes it's working with the board to actually establish their own goal. So you have a strategic plan, which a lot of times focuses on the district stuff, but I was just in a district two weeks ago where the board decided they needed a governance goal now. They had their strategic plan done, but they felt that they needed to take more of a leadership role in governance and making sure that the strategic plan had the resources that it needed. So a lot of that is really done based on, you know, what a district's needs are. We have about five different consultants and they have strengths in different areas. So, and we do a lot of professional development ourselves. So if we are called in to work with a district, districts kind of like to sometimes stay with the same consultant because the consultant gets to know them and they get to know the consultant. But we are pretty open to being able to help out districts wherever they need to be helped.
Patty, you mentioned something along a governance plan. Could you elaborate a little bit? I remember, I'm not familiar with that. I'm kind of curious just what that is and what that all means.
Well, I was working with a, a district that they had some new board members come on and they, we had done some norms for them because even though they had an ethics policy and whatever, they wanted to really build their team a lot stronger. And they wanted to be more emphasizing more policy development as well as the big picture of things rather than getting into some of the micromanaging things. And the other thing that they felt they really needed to do was community engagement. They felt that they needed to boost their image in the community. So we did a thing on community engagement. They ended up choosing three action steps for their goal, which was interesting because the rest of the staff is like, well, we always have goals to do and we always have action steps. It's nice to see that the board has actually got a goal and they're doing action steps. So their action steps were, they were going to be working more on their governance and professional development as a whole team and taking advantage of some of the webinars and the materials that WASB has. And then they wanted to look at making sure that all of their demographic groups were, had the opportunity to participate in co-curriculars, advanced classes and things like that. And the other piece that they wanted to work on was really specifying to the administrative team, what was the important data that they needed? They happened to be in a district where they had data overload and there was so much data that was thrown at them. And so part of their goal is they wanted to narrow down what were some key points of data that they were gonna look at every single year. So it was really helping them become more efficient and effective as a board in leading the district.
Right, Tony, last question here.
Hey Patty, one other thing I forgot to ask earlier. I read about that Plan Do, Study Act or that you guys referred to in your proposal. And I've been curious if it's possible, I really like the idea of, you know, something that if I'm reading that right, it's just basically like a 90-day periodic review of the plan, mission, track and what work can be accomplished. If it's at all possible, when you do send examples of other plans that you've done, if there is anything that you can share on one of those from a district that's implemented that, I'd be curious to see what that looks like.
Okay, I will see what we have. A lot depends on whether the district shares it back with us, so I will see what I can do.
Right, and I think that's a great accountability mechanism and I'd love to do examples.
I do, I do know that typically we see that done in a special board meeting or in a retreat where that information would be shared so that, because your regular board meetings, you have a lot of other business that you need to cover. And so sometimes we do see that as more like a quarterly retreat or a special board meeting that would be just focused on that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other further questions for Patty? Well Patty, thank you again. And if you want to just communicate, you know, with me via email about if you can get one of the documents, that would be great. And if there's any other follow-up questions, I'll shoot them your way and we'll be deliberating on this and let you know.
Okay, sounds wonderful. So I'll try to get you that information. It was nice chatting with you. It would have been better to do it in person, but this works well as well. So anyway, wish you all the best. I love that you have your mission and your values up behind you. I think that is just, I've never seen that before. That's just really cool. But I think that's, that's really nice. And then on behalf of the children in your district and your staff and your families, I do want to thank you for all your efforts and what you do on the Board of Education. There are so many hours and things that you deal with as a board that help to make the lives of kids better. So on behalf of all of them, we say thank you to you.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so one of the things that we need to decide is to be, I know, Jim, you had mentioned WASB.
Well, he's independent, he just does a lot. He just, he just often presented that. He also did joint stuff with the president of the association or the administrator. He has his, his own company, does WASB business. And I just had exposure to him sort of attending some of these in-service. And he brought, you know, one was on governance in terms of how you make decisions. And what was really of great interest to the board was, one of the exercises he did was the, as of a two-page document that had issues, who makes this decision? The board, the superintendent, or his joint? And everybody individually filled that out, including myself. And then he decided raising hands in terms of how to score this. And he had the answer in terms of research would say would be, you know, in terms of governance, in terms of how you make this. Everybody's in different places. So they really didn't know how they were doing business together. And so that's some of the exposure I had. And they had three, four districts, I think three or four districts as a panel with board members and superintendents all participating in this, sharing how beneficial it was. And they're all ended up in different places because they're all different boards with different issues. So that's some of the exposure. And then he's also presented his superintendents in, in, in terms of how to engage the community and some other things. And so that's just where I picked up what I did not actually contract with him myself, just highly regarded, you know, by superintendents and I would say board members. So that's just, you know, we're into this. And so I discussed with him and some of the information I shared, that was just information in terms of what you need to consider and maybe just three things you might want to consider. And it's really starts getting back to the other one about what's your scope? What are you really trying to accomplish? You know, some of my interests is basically where the board's at, the elected board, you know, with some thoughts in terms of how you're getting community engaged in terms of what your intentions are. So I think that this is all meaningful in terms of how you engage and elevate this voice that brings people together in, in the conversation. So, and his follow-up was, you know, the first amendment in the proposal is to get a little more clarification. So he was interested in your content. So if you're willing, I will send an intro. You can call him. And he was out until this week. So last, I talked to him just before we were able to get together. So that would be a follow-up. And again, I, I'm thinking he's just, I would be credible. Again, I would be as interested in somebody else in terms of what this proposal might be in some samples. I just know that he's used quite a bit now in the circle of, you know, those schools.
So is, is everyone, I mean, does everyone want to make a decision based on the three or do we want to wait to hear from this last person?
Yeah, I was, I'm sure. That's what I think. So I will immediately get that out so that you can maybe call him tomorrow or whatever and pick him up. You know, some, it could be gets back to me pretty quick. Sometimes I'm right too. And he's, you know, he's got a book of, and I've gone through a lot of Baldridge's many years back, you know, and gone through a lot of quality improvement stuff and, you know, all these things.
The system that she's talking about.
Yeah, and stuff like this. This, this stuff is all, you know, and, you know, he has published a book, you know, that really has a lot of tools that consultants use, you know, to, you know, so I'm just, he's well researched and this is his business and this is what he does. And a lot of it, I'm not sure how far it goes out, but it goes beyond education or it's in the educational circle. I just know that he's doing a lot of work in the educational circle. So I thought it would be something you might want to really consider.
Does that sound good, everybody?
Yeah, I mean, really, I'm so flusy. Like, gosh, who stood out? You know, what do we want? What are they really providing? I mean, I, I didn't get a real good sense from the question and answer session that, that, you know, I want some of you to say, okay, here's, here's what we do. And, and answer the questions for one of them. I mean, I thought of Matt's question and I thought, wow, you know, it's like, did you hear the question? And, and so I'm, I'd like to hear this, this last guy. And that might really gel things in my mind. And you could see, I mean, he put some stuff, you know, onto his website and stuff like this, so, you know, he's putting some stuff out there, but it wasn't specific to the strategic plan, a lot of it was in governance and.
Yeah, and I thought actually Patty did a nice job of communicating, you know, if you've never been to a strategic plan, it is, and, and why it's so important, kind of what Brett was saying is they're a facilitator. Patty, Patty did a great job of saying, she's not.
We don't, we don't.
Right, she's not, she's not coming in with research. She's not coming in with education. I mean, it's, they're there to facilitate the will of the committee and that we are coming up with that. And, and then I forget who said, I think Matthew said this, that we have excellent experts in our district that know curriculum, that know, that are teachers, that have all these elements that are going to be able to carry out the, the specific SMART goal that's established. Their job is to take all these characters that we have and put it down. What are the five, 10 biggest things that you think need to be the focus? And then, and then with, with insight from key stakeholders, you know, what are the teachers think we need? What are the students think we need? And they go and they do all that. They collect all that information to us and then we figure out how that fits into these pieces that we, that, that the steering committee has established. And then the, and then from there, then it's, so here's the big thing. And then we whittle it down to these little teeny things that are actually these actionable goals.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really hoping for somebody that, you know, my analogy on this one is the stakeholders remind you of the naive blind man. Ask to find the elephant, describe the elephant, you know? Because everybody has a different place to feel, different perspectives. And, and I want a coordinator to be able to sort of bring us to the point where we can meld these things together in a way that we really do get a confidence.
Right, and I think that that's very similar to what we had with our, with Joe.
Yeah, I thought so too.
That, that's exactly what the facilitator is going to.
Yeah, he was, he was one of those.
So if you remember that very first time where we came up with the things we were looking for, that's how it starts. And that's why.
Is Joe one of this stuff?
Well, Joe.
I mean, I know.
Yeah, he's with his firm.
No, but, you know, I mean.
But that's what it looks like is it's, it's, it's that kind of, and it starts with, I think it is very difficult for them to come up with a, a true proposal because we haven't given them scope. We haven't decided, are we gonna interview two people? Are we gonna interview three people? Are, are we gonna do every single principle or what's that gonna look like?
You know, I don't want to huff and puff and go on for months and stuff and end up with, you know, nonusable stuff.
Exactly.
You can end up with a short document really easy. And that's, and you don't hear a lot about strategic planning as much as you do in the past. You went through the Baldridge age, you know, that was the quality improvement and stuff and.
I have seen some strategic plans though, they're on district websites, you know, so. Those, those of you that kind of want to see what that looks like, if they're not, I mean, because I see where they're coming from too, is right. I want everyone taking their strategic plan that they spent this money on and whatever, in some districts, right? You know, which is why I think we got that from schools that connect kind of felt that way. And she's kind of like, well, I asked, you know, but I don't know that I can, to just hand this over. So, you know, looking at some of those.
So we not, not only have to do a strategic plan, I'm, I don't, you know, I'm, we not only have to do a strategic plan, but we have to engage the stakeholders to buy into it so that it then becomes something that we need to work.
Correct, which is where the facilitator then will go off and plot that, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, this is a tool. We are seeking a tool to, you know, guide us on this. And a tool is only as good as you're gonna use it. So like literally if you, you know, we can make the, the most of this and really rally around this tool or we could do exactly that and set it on a shelf. So I mean, obviously the amount of time that we're putting into this, I hope we really, really do, I mean, it go on the website, it, we really use this tool. And I'm really hoping that we get a quality tool out of this. So, I mean, yeah, it's important to, to get the right tool, but at the same time, it's gonna be what we, what we make of it. So I'm just gonna be hoping that this is really something that the district utilizes, the community utilizes and looks to it as an opportunity to move ourselves forward.
Well, and I think, and I think that if we, if we're not gonna make a commitment to use it, then we should not spend money.
Absolutely, correct.
Tony?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, one of the key things that we gotta remind is the plan has to be actionable. And I, I would also reiterate in my personal experience that implementing some planning is a great. And I, I would also reiterate in my personal experience that, uh, implementing some planning is a great element of accountability that I, I think our district wants and needs. And I would also add to that, that in my opinion, if we were to look at the highest performing organizations in any sector, whether it be education, uh, and, or private and business, you know, I think the ones that are doing the best, you know, typically have a plan. Right, so this is a worthwhile endeavor for, for more than our community. And, uh, you know, I think if we just say, just as we're going through the process, uh, engage the stakeholders and just figure out which path is going to be the best for us to take. And then just make sure that it's actionable and work with.
I mean, I would definitely say go plant on the fail. I mean, you, you really do need to have, you, you need to know what you're calling. Now, the, the state does require some things for improvement plans and so there, um, you know, I, I would say, and I did follow up in terms of, uh, you know, with Mark and there, there is no recent, uh, strategic plan on file. But I did follow up also with, uh, Joanne being a senior staff member who would, you know, as a principal before, you know, uh, and she was recalling that there was some work in this area. So, so I'm hoping that there might still be something about what we might have left off in something that was more visible and engaging for the community. Because I, I totally agree, um, you know, the synergy of having everybody understand what you're working to accomplish. And everybody is trying to contribute to that because it's that clear, right? It works. It works. Uh, you know, I, I went through this process and we hired, uh, and this was when I was in Traverse City. And, and it was, it was really quite elaborate. And it was over controversy, uh, because we, we had been kicking up the, our financial deficit down the road, you know, for, you know, it was just increasing operating deficit. We were a very high achieving school district, uh, but we were ready to connect and we were well funded. So, so that was an issue too. And so we did a very targeted strategic plan because we had to resolve this. And I had community forums of 400. Now, now, so the architectural firm that we used, who gave us just this excellent proposal, okay? It was really detailed. And then they had a couple of superintendents, uh, that they brought on board to assist. We had to kick the superintendents off because they, they, they were really kind of taken away. So we kind of picked up some of that slack. So we had to make some adjustments because we saw, uh, now it ended up great, but in, in it was hard decisions. I mean, we closed some schools. We, we did a number of things, um, to not gut our programs because we really had high-end programs. The state had also just increased the graduation requirements, which meant that we might be, not be able to offer some of our really fine electants. Um, because we are really big in the execution of the, uh, high and performing arts. And we, you know, all these AP classes and, you know, they give them all the new graduation requirements. We went to trimesters. I mean, so we did a whole lot. A lot of that stayed, um, three, four years down the road, some of it changed. They went away from trimesters. I mean, there's all kinds of things, you know, but it sustained itself for, and it was a lot of support. Now, I would also tell you that, um, you know, I had, uh, you know, through this whole process, I had a board with, with only one member who came on board after I came on board. And, and there was some senior board members there who felt that they accomplished a lot. And we closed four schools, some wanted to close more because they felt like they really didn't finish it. But it was kind of finding that balance of, you know, where they ended up. Now, um, uh, two, two of my board members had retired, uh, and seven people were running for that. And five of them were, were from one of the closed schools. Um, now what happened though was I ended up having the greatest support, uh, from those, that, that one school that I closed. They gave the most resistance because in the end they recognized it was always about the kids. You know, but it was the L issues that were, you know, but we did a, we did a lot of things. I mean, you know, we moved, we also moved from at that time, um, junior hiring to no school. They had attempted it once before, but bringing really, this is all second through strategic plan. Yeah, but, you know, it was focused though. I mean, it was, um, the board had established some parameters.
Right, I think that's.
And I had to, and that's why I raised that one question before, because I think you're recognizing some challenges in the district. So you already have some thoughts about things that need to be resolved, hopefully, you know? And, and at the same time, you're, you're looking in terms of where you were at one time in the past relative to how you're achieving. And where you're at today, you know, recognizing that we need a really big group here and, and move us forward. So I think that this is really, um, even beneficial. Um, but again, having the right people help facilitate it and, and get this stuff down and that it is a living and working dynamic. Now, I've come across some other things and I think, um, you know, I studied, for example, uh, I was into recognizing some achievement issues, um, where there's been, you know, there, there's a lot of, um, direction, you know, that, that's born in terms of how people have been successful in schools. And there's a lot of research on that. At one period of time, you know, they did whole school reforms because they're recognizing they're kind of taking apart some component parts, but we really haven't really addressed the whole issue. And, um, one, um, you know, was really, and so I use this curriculum, it was actually at the Charkis that I was at, but, uh, that my board, we had three professors on there, they selected this, you know, this software. Uh, but what was really interesting of this is for the implementation role models, this is so detailed in terms of how we prioritize, what has to happen, what happens first. And they're measuring how well it's being executed. I mean, so that's an example of what I think we'd like to all have. You know, we get into that level of detail that, um, it makes sense, they prioritize it and then you're tracking it. You're tracking on a regular basis to, you know, and so I haven't seen that detail in some strategic plans that I've seen. You know, now ours was very specific, you know, but it was, was focused. And even though that is spread out then, uh, and part of that, you know, you know, and I hate to say that for Michigan, had been in the, um, uh, you know, kind of in a recession for years with a loss of what they kind of, you know, more of the industry at that one time. And, and, uh, the state was looking for, I mean, I was able to capitalize and then they offered a state retirement settlement, try to lower the cost of, to all the sapping costs. Uh, and, you know, so I had made this and then my board changed. Um, and I was just thinking that it had to heal now because we made some tough decisions. But it really had a lot of support, you know, even though there was still resistance afterwards that because of those tough decisions.
And I think, um, you know, both Brett and Patty had talked about, um, and in the, the strategic plan that I was part of with Brett, how it's important to have on our agenda, every single meeting that we're talking about our strategic plan and where we're, where are we?
What, what I.
So then it stays a, a living document.
Always in the long run, keeping it fresh, absolutely.
And one of the things I go strongly about is, um, you know, the, uh, it's good to have a strategic plan and it's good to really know what your two top priorities are. You know, because you really have that focus. You have to have that plan that is always pulling people together for a longer end goal. But you really have to know in terms of you think on these two major goals, uh, while other things are going to start coming together. Because that's really what, what might be holding you back.
Yes, it's really all about organizational, uh, clarity, just prioritizing resources, allocating resources to keep that good. Otherwise, you know, if you don't do it, you just kind of end up playing whack-a-mole, which kind of, you know, figure out.
Which is, which is, I think, how we feel. I think a lot of us feel like we're whacking the mole right now.
I, I, I.
It's a mole.
I, yeah. Yeah, I, I think, um, also education, unlike technology with planned obsolescence and the aim for that. But just think about how technologies evolved. They stop doing things, you know, when there's something better. Now, education has sometimes consulted, maybe all of the backwater. But, um, education, you know, what I found is we just keep adding things to the plan and you never take anything off. And we then can lose priority over a period of time and exhaust people.
I'm sure teachers can understand.
Yeah, sure, I think, absolutely.
Uh, so what is the, what are we feeling with the next step here? What are we?
Well, so the next step is that, um, I'm, right, I'm going to connect with our first person.
Okay.
Um, yeah, the, yeah, you know.
That's that one, right?
Um, he's got his own.
He's got his own, this is Drew Haddock and I, you know, I, I think before we made the information, I'm sure he had his website on there. This is, you know, so there is information, he's proud, you know, somebody can have his board.
He's done that to me, yes.
I will.
Okay.
And, and he provided some things, he started thinking about, here's some research on strategic plans, you know? So he was, you know, saying, you know, understand your context and everything, you know? So a little bit of the scope of what you're attempting to accomplish is critical. Uh, and you've been elected, willing to kind of bring this focus and the help this.
So I'll, so I will connect the group and, um, see if I can't get, uh, some type of proposal to us or our Tuesday meeting will have it on there and that we can deliberate.
And then it doesn't need to evolve or whatever.
Right.
Do we have a, like a retreat to say, you know, to really discuss among ourselves? Okay, what, why, why do we need this? I, I, I mean, I think we've all figured this out. Why do we need this and what do we want to really, you know, really want to kind of focus on?
Well, I think that, I mean, we, we could, Yuri, but I think that that is going to be so much better than when we have selected someone to facilitate, just what you're talking about. That they sit down with us and they're like, you know, again, remember Joe. That is exactly what, that's very similar. And, and he was able to focus us all in, right? And to do that. So that's what I would propose, that I will, um, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, that was bad. Yeah, sorry. I was just saying, that's for really having a group facilitator. Like a group facilitator really helps random people because it's, it's easy to, I mean, I'm all guilty, but we get off track and you just, you know, you start talking and I just don't.
I said, yeah, yeah, that's right. I, I, I'm, I'm so, I mean, I, I.
That's a great process.
A facilitator is going to not, it gets, you know, sometimes people are just more vocal and others people, you know, I mean, like we, we talked about, some people don't want to, they'll respond to a survey.
Right.
Then you will give you public comment, you know? Okay, so how do you know, like a good facilitator is also going to make sure that all the voices, you know, are, are heard too.
Well, I understand what you're saying though. I mean, but the thing I, so one thing I'm severely guilty of is paralysis through analysis.
Yeah.
You know, a, a big thing for me, I just sit there and I'll look at it, look at it, look at it. And what did I do? Hit nothing. I just looked at it, so.
We're not going to do that.
It's a process, yeah. Like a lot of data.
Did you want to sell the map?
I just wanted to, to be a Collins here. Um, so this process is, is very important and I've been listening very attentively to all these interviews. And what I try to do is take little pieces that each perspective of what they're selling or providing service. And I try to, try to remember something that I liked about them. So when we do move forward, we pick one, like the following up with the board, Patty's idea, that she said, yeah, it seems simple. But if we put that into our action plan, and that, we don't have those conversations unless we go through this time-consuming process with all meeting with our families and persons, what we are serving the community to our best ability. By doing this right now is how we do it. And, and so Colin, your efforts are, are not debate.
Well, I don't think they are, oh, I just, yeah.
So what I'm saying is this is an important process and we're doing our diligence. And that facilitator that you picked, we'll all get behind you, we'll, you know, however we vote on it, we'll get behind that, that person and we'll try our best. But we, remember their personalities. It doesn't mean that that's who, you know, the plan is coming from. They're all kind of following the same model as from what I, my research are following, which is who do we want to interact with? And who do we feel is most invested in our community? So I want to ask questions, I try to see how much they're invested in the success of this exact district. So that really weighs on me and, and, uh, through this interview process, uh, I, I've found two candidates that are really starting to, you know, see where they're really invested in the success of this district. It doesn't matter if they live here, it matters that they're invested. And they'll do whatever it takes to make the success of this district work out because we're investing in them, they're going to invest in us. So that's what I look for. So this process is very good and, and, and it takes us even closer as a board as well in the community to be informed that we're trying to do our best for their job. And I agree with that. I would also say that these are very challenging times, not only, you know, COVID, I mean, you know, there's a shortage, uh, you know? Uh, and this is, this is real. Uh, so I'm comparing notes, you know, from how difficult it was for us to get some positions filled. Very, you know, and so these are challenging times, you know, in terms of are we going to continue to elevate in, in what we're attempting to accomplish during these difficult times?
Right, and with the shortage, get the best people to come to our district.
Last comment, as of A, we're technically in room seven.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's another quarter.
Okay, Tony and then we're done.
Yeah, I was just going to add, uh, to Collins' point of analysis, by analysis, you know, I'm actually okay with the calls we have now and we fill the policy, uh, requirements and gate people. You know, I'll refer to the board, if you guys go getting a fourth board is, is good. And Jim, you feel strongly about this guy, but, you know, I'm ready to move forward on a plan, uh, you know, based on. I think we just got to figure out what we're going to do with, um, and if you guys see value in the fourth option, you know, I'm okay with that. But I've seen enough out of the, the three that we talked about so far. So with that, you know, I'll introduce a motion that we, uh, we select a colleague tonight to be the process for.
Is it an actual item?
It is an actual item.
Just want to make sure.
So somebody want to second that?
I'll second that.
Any, uh, further discussion about that? Yeah.
Do, does that, uh, does the deliberation because of their bids, do we have to discuss those that bids in closed session? That's the only thing I was curious about because we do not have a this closed session.
I don't think they're negotiating.
That was all open, you know? Yeah, so I'm just curious, I just want to make sure they're following it, you know?
I'd really like to hear what, I don't want to say Jim's guy.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm missing myself, I just.
Yeah, but you're.
I picked up in this last year, you know, your reputation, you can't lie. Last thing, I need this to have a limit, you know, but I wouldn't.
But, you know, I would really like to hear what he has to say. I, I guess I don't really feel that I would quickly answer that. No. Some of you have done strategic planning before, so you've seen, you know, seen that in action, know it's involved. I guess for myself, I haven't, so I would like to hear more and see if there's that person that stands out from only the four of them.
Well, this is.
And not only that, but we've been in session, we've been interviewing for a while now. And I don't feel like this is the best time to deliberate something like that. I feel like I'm personally just kind of wiped out.
I agree.
And again, I don't feel like I'm at my best to make those decisions at the moment. So I'd like to really have to say I'm happy to be at my best.
I would like to add, and I kind of agree, the reason being is because I, I have some deliberation about some of the people that have heard already. And then if we were to make a decision based on that, I, I guess I, I probably couldn't, but we haven't really, are we going to discuss all that right now and that's going to stretch everything all out? I, and this, or just make the plan to hear this fourth guy? And then let's put our, our thoughts together and we can deliberate in a session to hear our comments of what we think or whatever. And that's kind of, but yeah, right now would be a little.
Any other?
Yes, so, I mean, based on all three in hearing, all three so far that we've heard from, they all had a common theme that they are facilitators. All right? To me, just then, you know, like, okay, they're all facilitators of information, just kind of close down to how they facilitate, how they, you know, what their, their plan is, their timeline, their price, their this, their that. Um, and I guess, so I, going through that, you know, I, I was under the impression that we were going to have the three options. I heard each, all three, and I actually do have, uh, one that I feel very comfortable with, that I am okay with. Um, so I, I, I do understand the deliberation, you know, we don't want to stretch out further. Um, but I guess, you know, what kind of timeline would we be? There's one question that I would have is what kind of timeline would we, would we have to then add that, that, uh, this fourth person drew to our, our, our interview process? Cause, okay, so maybe this person is like just dynamic, dynamic. Um, but I, I guess I don't want to be just, let's, let's hear another one, let's hear another one, let's hear another one. I, I think at some point we do need to just figure out who do we want to go with? Um, what do we want to do? Maybe this person's better, um, but I guess I just wanted to touch on that. It, because it seemed perfect to the discussion.
That is something rushed to judgment is, 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 is warned at this point. I mean, um, I, I, I just really like to do it, you know, right? And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sold on any of it.
Anyone else? Yeah, I think, well, you said your point would be just see if you could come up with something for a Tuesday meeting. So, just to stay.
And it may be also just with drill, you know, instead of talking with you, it might, you know, they, you might even conclude, you might conclude, you know, that, you know, that's just somewhere I want to go.
Sure, and we're still, Patty, just, I mean, we're still kind of waiting to see what she can send us. She's going to ask us what she can send us. Example, we have a review.
Example, we haven't reviewed any of that information, I don't feel complete to make that decision.
Any other discussion?
We've had much longer meetings than tonight, um, but not that I want someone to go on one, but, um, you know, like I said, I, I just, I've seen it off, but I'll, I'll look for, obviously.
Well, we have a, we have a motion, we have a motion on the table, so. Does anyone else, anyone else want to speak to the motion?
I, I, you know, I'm just, I'm just not convinced what we're going to see out of this fourth, or we got a free, I feel free ones, um. And I, I think that, you know, I have enough information, I, I think, to maybe decide right now.
Anybody want else want to speak to the motion?
I do found that in making a discussion about deliberation, I'm obviously tired as well, but I can, you gain a high effective level yet. So I would be open to making a discussion about my choice and I would be open to voting in the board. That's why I'm second to the motion.
Right, as far as I'm concerned, if we had a, we had a making an opinion tonight, um, I think what we said, as far as everybody being a facilitator, I'm more concerned with the ability and investment within this community. I have.
Okay, well, okay, so we're not picking anybody right now. All we're doing is deciding whether or not we're even going to pick tonight.
Right, and I, I personally don't, it sounds like everybody wants to, so in my opinion, I'm more concerned with, you know, I'm able to voice the opinion.
Okay, so let's, can we, we, okay, so just so everyone knows, the only thing that we're voting on right now is whether or not we're going to pick the person tonight.
Right.
Yes, just, just 10, 15 minutes ago, we were all thinking, you want me to hear what the fourth person.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, we're like saying, well, are we going to pick one tonight?
Right.
For free.
I don't.
I'd like to go back to finding out our fourth person, what that person has to offer. Okay, and so can, okay, but can we do that with votes? Right, I mean, we could go round and round and round. So all in favor of deliberating tonight and making a decision about who's going to be our strategic plan facilitator, um, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those, um, not in favor of the motion, then say nay.
Nay.
If a nays have it, therefore, we will not deliberate tonight. And, um, hopefully we can get some information and have it put on the agenda for you.